Good evening, everybody. Welcome. It is Monday, May 13th, 2019. We are in the multipurpose room in Bennington for the Select Board meeting. My name is Donald Campbell. I'm the Chair of the Select Board, and I'd like to begin by having our members introduce themselves. Let's start with our Town Manager, please.
Mr. Stewart.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. I'm Jeanne Connor.
Good evening. Carson Therwar.
Hello. I'm Jeannie Jenkins.
Good evening. Chad Gordon.
William Scully.
Nancy Lively, Secretary.
Nancy Lively, thank you very much. All right. Well, the first order of business is to pledge allegiance to the flag, and starting on my left, Bill, would you be willing to lead us tonight, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome.
Nice of everybody to come out on this lovely, warm, spring evening. Everybody's wearing their sweaters and coats in the audience. The first item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We will be looking to approve the minutes of April 22nd and the very brief minutes of April 29th, as well as the warrants, which have been circulated and reviewed by everybody. And we have a proclamation to be read this week. May I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any conversation about the consent agenda? We'll read the proclamation after we pass this.
I need to abstain from the second, from the...
Minutes of the 29th?
Yes.
I do, too.
Okay. So Nancy, did you get that?
Yes.
Okay. That was the, not emergency meeting, but that was the very abrupt meeting that was called to catch some liquor licenses that...
And I did sign the license. I just didn't sign it at the meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
And we had a couple corrections, but Nancy already has them.
Any other corrections?
I gave mine to Nancy.
Okay. Bill, you've gotten your questions on the warrant satisfied?
Yes, yes. Stuart was very helpful in that. Thank you.
All right. Stuart? All right. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So Jeannie?
Yes.
We have before us a proclamation, and why don't you dive right in and tell us what you've got here?
All right. It's lovely. It's EMS Week proclamation, and it reads as follows: Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Bennington, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through 25, 2019, as Emergency Medical Services Week, with the theme EMS Strong, Stronger Together. We encourage the community to observe and celebrate this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities with those who are there in our time of need. Dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 13th day of May 2019, Select Board, Town of Bennington, Vermont.
Thank you, Jeannie.
Lovely.
So we have some people from the Emergency Medical Services Group here, which I'd like to bring up in just a minute. Stuart, do we have that original for signature?
It's coming around.
Are we supposed to vote on it first?
We have voted on it.
Oh, that's right.
We voted in with the consent agenda. Yep, thank you. Knowing that we were going to like it. So while this is going around for signature, I can't resist but take a minute just to say, I'm sure you were at the Bennington College event when that happened. Did you get called in for that?
I agree with you, yes.
And it was really remarkable, the level of service that our community got from the Emergency Medical Services, as well as from all of the fire department. I think it was a five-alarm fire, is that right? And there was such a great response, and we were very, very thankful that so much of that building was able to be saved, and that the people that were injured were able to be treated, and so thank you very much for your part in that. But why don't I ask you folks to come up and maybe just, Forrest, are you willing to introduce who you have with you, please?
Thank you all for all of your support. With me tonight is Brian Pete, is the Chairman of our Board. We have Captain Katie Vandell and Captain Michael Condon, two of our paramedics here in town, that are here with us tonight.
I'm sure Jim Carroll would like to sign this, but he's away. He's in...
Doing other business.
I'm sure he's doing other business. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate everything you do for our community.
Thank you all so much for your support.
Yep. Thanks for coming tonight. Thanks for all the help you give us.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we are going to move on to Citizens Comment, which is a time we reserve to hear residents' thoughts about topics not on the agenda. We welcome your insights, but because topics are unwarranted, this is not a time for board discussion or decision-making. Please state your name when you approach the mic. We're fain for making personal attacks, and keep your comments to under three minutes. The first person on our list tonight is Mr. William Stewart.
Good evening, residents of Bennington, the Select Board. My name's William Stewart. I live at 127 Bradford Street. I'm here as most times this time of year, it's time for the windows to come open and listen to the tractor-trailer traffic, as it always goes on. So I come tonight, as I have in the past and many times in the past, to ask the question of what is going to happen with the Bradford-Morgan Spring.
We have an update coming on that later in the meeting, but why don't we ask Stuart if you'd be willing to jump ahead to your manager's report and tell us where we are? Thank you for coming. Thank you for asking that question.
Thank you.
As I indicated in my manager's report, all of the required permits that we need from the state to, in fact, relocate the Morgan Spring discharge location have been acquired. The appeal periods have expired without comment. I have a final cost estimate. Originally estimated at close to $500,000. The cost estimate I have just came in just recently. It's at $378,000, which is good news. And we have an agreement to purchase the land that is known as Scarafoni's property across from Johnny Suds for $71,000. We will most likely be purchasing that land before June 1, or at least have a closing arranged before June 1, because that is our commitment, and we'll have to talk at future date about how we fund the actual construction. There's the update.
Secondly, now, as we asked that question before, is that water going to be accessible by the town residents, that spring water, is it else going to be accessible to all of us? Because it is a town water source, and it says public water supply. So my question is, is why are we buying our water back from Crystal Rock instead of not having it accessible to us at the aquifer, the new aquifer that's going to be moved?
Well, it is not planned to have a pedestrian or residential collection point at that facility. That is going to be purely for the truck sales that we are making. There is a spigot in the community park that is tied directly to the municipal system, and that is also available for people during the season. It's obviously turned off during the winter time.
So in other words, that Crystal Rock is still going to have main control over our water, is the answer. The question I'm asking you and the answer I'm looking for, is it yes or no?
I don't think that's true, Bill. Crystal Rock or Vermont Pure has a maximum 100,000 gallons a day.
Vermont Pure is defunct.
Well, Vermont Pure in its original form, obviously there is a new company that has purchased them. They have up to 100,000 gallons a day that they can draw on the spring, which puts out about 2 million gallons a day.
Under the old contract, what is it going to be under the new contract? Have you thought about that yet?
We haven't actually developed a new contract yet, because this contract exists until 2022, I believe. We do have some other interest in our water, and that will be a new contract that would be developed and approved by this board, should we go forward with it. So currently, it will be the former Vermont Pure, Crystal Rock, that will be continuing to buy our water. Generally, on the highest day, they draw about 88,000 gallons a day.
Six trucks a day.
Close to, more close to 47,000 on average, so...
Right.
But that will continue.
So is there a scheduled time or a estimated time when this is going to start taking place? Or is this going to last another three years until the contract is finally up, and then you'll do something about it?
Well, I think the question for the board is, is where do we find the funding to construct the system? $378,000, $380,000 is a substantial sum of money. We have some interest in a new customer who may want to participate in the capital expenses, but otherwise, it's this board that will be making a determination of where the money comes from, whether it goes to our ratepayers, which would be the normal course of events, and that would then increase our budget by some $380,000 to construct this facility, if we have no other help.
Well, in all reality, Crystal Rock is the one that takes all, is the only person taking the water. So if you really think about it, is 80,000 gallons of water worth making a minimal amount of water and all the expense it makes to take to move it, when in the reality, when it's all done and over with, it should be done and over with? Because we're not making money, we're losing money. The cost of maintaining that and paying the salaries of the water department men is far over, exceeds the cost of what we make on water.
So we'll be looking at all of that, but we haven't seen any of that yet, and we'll be looking to you to develop some good proposals for us, Stuart.
We'll have that for you.
So I think that's the update for tonight, Bill.
Okay. I'll see you next time.
Thank you very much. Rebecca Hill.
Hello, everybody. I'm Rebecca Hill. I'm a newcomer to Bennington a couple weeks ago, but not new to Vermont. I've lived mostly in Vermont for the past 30 years. I'm one of the new nurse practitioners for Sevita Health. I hope at this point all of you know what Sevita Health is. It's the opiate treatment program in Bennington. It's housed in the back of Mount Anthony Primary Care. We now have two physicians and two full-time nurse practitioners, and if you have any questions, I don't really have questions or comments right now. We're up to almost 200 patients, and we're getting many more over the next month, probably 150 more. I think it's a great program. I invite any and all of you to come and visit, and actually see the physical space, meet all of us. I'd like to be the liaison between our agency and the Select Board and the town.
I'd be glad to give you a call on that, and we could see if we could set up a visiting time for the Select Board, so that it didn't have to happen piecemeal.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right. So we are going to move on to item number four on our agenda, which is the Planning Commission update from Mr. Dan Monks and Robert Ebert, and others, I understand.
Got the podium back, I see. Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Robert Ebert. I'm a member of the Town of Bennington's Planning Commission. Unfortunately, our Chairman, Michael McDonough, couldn't be here this evening, but we do have Charlie Kopp, one of our commission members over here, so we've got that working, going for us. We're here tonight to give you an overview, as well as a progress report on a project the Planning Commission has undertaken to review and possibly reform our land use and development regulations with an eye towards possibly incorporating form-based design standards. So why are we doing this? Well, at the most basic level, we're doing this because the town plan says that we should. On page 30 of the town plan, under the heading Land Use Policies and Recommendations, item number two, states, "The town shall ensure that municipal regulations and public investments support the land use policies of this plan. Consideration should be given to developing a form-based land use ordinance to simplify implementation and further these policies." And in fact, two sections of the current land use development regulations, those dealing with downtown and north side drive, have already incorporated some form-based design standards. And additionally, over the past several years, the Planning Commission has been meeting with a wide variety of stakeholders in the community, and these conversations have led to discussions on the commission about the need to review our regulations. In a broader sense, the Planning Commission would like to bring the land use and development regulations along with the recently amended town plan, and who knows, maybe even the recently amended town charter, fully into the 21st century. We want to make sure that our regulations are up to date. We want to eliminate any redundancies or inconsistencies, and most importantly, we want to make sure that our standards are designed so as to create and maintain a town in which we all want to live. The commission wants to make sure that Bennington is competitive with other communities in attracting business and development. Now, this does not mean denigrating or lowering our standards. What it means is making the document more intuitive and simpler to understand, making the standards themselves more straightforward and easy to interpret, and to make greater use of graphic representations of design concepts, instead of relying primarily on written definitions. And lastly, because the Planning Commission encourages anyone to make improvements to their own properties, we want our land use and development regulations to be easy for the citizens of Bennington to use. You may be getting a sense that this is rather a large and ambitious project. Accordingly, there will be many people involved, and tonight, we're going to hear from a few of them. We're going to begin with a bright young man named Daniel Monks, who is not only the Assistant Manager of the Town of Bennington, but our Planning Director as well, and who will be explaining the whole review process. We will then hear from Professor Donald Sharafkin of Bennington College, and I'm going to explain his role in the project when it's his turn to come up here. And lastly, we're going to hear from Jim Sullivan and Catherine Briers of the Bennington County Regional Commission, and they will explain their role in the project to you as well. So now, with no further ado, please give your undivided attention to Dan Monks.
Well, I don't have as professional a speaking voice as Robert, but I'll do my best. My part of the presentation this evening is just to kind of talk a little bit about the process, how we started this effort, and where we hope to go. The first step in this process actually started back in October of 2018, when the Bennington County Regional Commission and the Planning Commission hosted a forum on form-based standards at Bennington's Kappa. There was a presentation from a well-known planner, Randall Arant, who is very knowledgeable about form-based standards, and he gave an hours-long presentation. It was very informative, and that was back in October of 2018. About that same time, the Planning Commission, with the Select Board's approval, applied for a state planning grant in the amount of about $20,000, a little less than $20,000. And in December of 2018, we learned that we, the Town of Bennington, was granted that municipal planning grant, so that helped us, could help us move forward with this project. Once we had learned that we had received the grant, the Planning Commission developed a request for proposals, and I believe some excerpts were given to you folks, just to give you some context. That request for proposals was broadly advertised, and we received three proposals. They're quite varied, I can say. But we did choose the Bennington County Regional Commission, one of the folks that did submit a proposal. They were chosen based on their broad project scope, the budget, which couldn't be beat, and their familiarity with Bennington itself and the town plan. So we have the Bennington County Regional Commission on board, and you'll be hearing from Catherine and/or Jim later to talk about their role. A little bit of our project timeline, which Jim and Catherine may talk about in more detail, we're underway. We hope to have a draft for everyone to review by February of 2020. It's a little ambitious, but that's our goal, and we're going to do our best to get there. Our process will focus on land use districts in and around the downtown, mostly. We felt that the less dense districts, residential forest and agricultural districts, were already pretty well-served by our subdivision standards, and you'll recall, the Rural Conservation District has specific and very detailed aesthetic standards that apply to that district, and that's a very large district in our rural area. And as Robert mentioned, our Plant-Commercial District already has design standards. Throughout the process, we will be actively soliciting input from stakeholder groups and from the general public. We're going to be working with the Bennington County Regional Commission to develop an efficient and effective process for that effort, so that we can get as good and useful information as possible as we go through this. One of the very important stakeholders will be the Select Board themselves, so we'll be looking to get together with you folks in a work session in a more informal setting, where we can talk with you folks about this project. I think that's all I have. Oh, one other thing, we will be getting more information out, but at this early date, we do already have an email set up for anybody that would like to begin making comments about, hey, what do you like, what do you don't like about our land use and development regulations? And that email is PERMITS, P-E-R-M-I-A-T-S, at benningtonvt.org, and we'll make sure to gather all those emails that come in and distribute those widely to folks. With that, Robert, do you want to introduce our next section? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Boy, that was pretty quick. Okay, so when the Planning Commission, we started talking about this project, you know, what we'd like to accomplish, how we'd like to go about it, and a couple of, well, more than two, but a couple of issues came up. First off, we wanted to make sure the Planning Commission doesn't undertake this project in a vacuum, that it's not just the five of us sitting around thinking what is, we think is best for the entire town. So we want input from people, and from as many people as we can attract to it. Dan just mentioned, we will be facilitating focus group discussions from people in the community. I'm hoping one of those focus groups might be members of the Select Board. We certainly have informational meetings. I'm hoping the Bennington banner will help us get the word out. We've got an email, we've got a presence on the town's webpage that people can access to send us their thoughts. So we're hoping to get as much input in this as possible. Another issue we talked about was our desire to try to bring in fresh perspectives on this, new eyes looking at this, not just people who happen to live in Bennington. Is there a way to get people from outside of the community to come in and take a look at this? And then another one of our commission members, Nick Glassoff, had, I think what we all agree, is a pretty brilliant idea. He wondered if we could possibly get students from Bennington College somehow involved in this project. And the answer is yes, we can, and yes, we are. And with that as the entire introduction, let me introduce Professor Sharafkin from Bennington College. He's going to come up. He's got some people here with him, and they're going to give you a little overview of what their participation is going to be in our project.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Over the past number of years, students at the college have become more and more interested in being engaged with the physical fabric of the town, and so I'm always more than happy to help out when I can. And I think I have the largest number of students currently who really are interested in urban questions. So we were at the Form-Based Code presentation back in October, and so it was very natural when we were asked if we'd be interested in being more involved in this project. Of course, we were quick to create a tutorial, which is what we do at Bennington when we don't have classes in the curriculum. We invent them. So this group of students, they're not all here. We have actually eight students who are involved in this tutorial. And each one of them has chosen a particular aspect of the zoning document to study, based on their own interests. And many of them are actually from places all over the world, which also brings an interesting perspective when we're studying this unique condition here. So would you like me to introduce them? I can name them and let you know where they're from, and give you just kind of a thumbnail of what they're doing?
Without asking you to embarrass them too much, why don't you have them stand up too, please?
Sure.
So Cat TV can get their glowing faces.
First, we have Ulysses Lin, who is here from Beijing, who's been studying the road systems, and is currently working on developing ideas around more accessible bike paths. We have Aki Maske, who is from Nepal, and she's been interested in the water for a while. She started off with the floods, with the zones, the flood zones, but is currently looking at the new water systems that are being laid to alleviate the PFOA issues, and thinking about how that might impact planning questions going forward. Next is Maria Salim, who is from Indonesia, and she's been really interested in studying the school districts and finding ways to make them more accessible and safer to the Duncan Allen, from the West Coast, he's been studying the Central Business District, and he's been very interested in thinking about how to better develop the entrance paths into the town, how zoning might facilitate improving the quality of those entrances. Georgia Williams, not from Georgia, but from down south, Arkansas, who's been, who's developing a website, actually. She's been really interested in the transition zones. How does it feel to be on an edge between two adjacent zones, and how might that be developed? That condition of transition has been interesting to her. And Rua Sivai is here from Syria, and she's been interested in studying the various residential zones, and how the different residential zones differ from one another, and what are the characteristics that distinguish one housing condition from another. And so we're looking forward to those projects being developed in the next three weeks. They'll be, they'll be the prize to be finished.
Sounds to me like a lot of work getting done, so I don't know what our town staff has to do, but...
We've got it all covered.
Yeah, no, it's great. It's very, thank you all very much for bringing your perspectives, both national and international. We're really lucky to have you, thinking about this and giving us some fodder for the grist, Bill, so...
Well, we hope to be able to put together all of their work at the end and bring it for your perusal, or at least to the planning boards.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
All right, great. Well, I hope you're excited about that. I mean, that may very well be a very unique approach to this kind of project, so we're really excited to have that be part of it. So as Dan mentioned, you know, when we were awarded the grant, we put out a request for a proposal for companies and organizations that do this kind of work. We received three. Again, our Chairman, Michael McDonough, kind of came up with kind of a decision-making matrix by which we evaluated all three, including, you know, educational experience, work experience, you know, the resources they have. We evaluated the examples of the work that they gave us, and very pleased to have awarded the contract to the Bennington County Regional Commission. And so now, we're going to hear from Jim Sullivan and/or Catherine Briers, however they decide to make their presentation. So please come on up and explain your role in the project, please. So please come on up and explain your role in the project.
You'll hear from me briefly, and I'll turn it over to Kathryn, who is going to be the principal consultant working on this project, but thank you for the time. Great overview, by the way, of the Form-Based Code process, and an impressive group of students, I think, from Bennington College, and I think we'll all benefit from what they have to say. And their wide-ranging geographical perspective, given that I am from the exotic town of Bennington, Vermont. So it'll be definitely nice to hear from them. So the general idea, as I'm sure probably most of you know with the Form-Based Regulations or Form-Based Standards, is to do a couple things. One is to try to place a real emphasis on physical form and what development and redevelopment of properties looks like, and to maybe, in some cases, de-emphasize the focus on the specific use. Certainly, some uses would still be allowed and not allowed, but a much stronger emphasis on physical form and the functionality of building and a site. And the other thing is really to try to simplify the process. And a lot of Form-Based Codes really are developed with the idea of being an economic development driver by making the development process as predictable and as clear as possible, and to really make it a little bit more of an administrative process, dealing with a lot of the types of site design issues that you would ordinarily deal with during a Development Review Board process in the actual development of the Form-Based Code. So if we could come up with, by the areas that Kathryn will talk about a little bit, the type of specific design and character of property and how it works and fits in with that area upfront, and the development of the standards and the illustrations it will provide, it will hopefully simplify the review process. So with that, a little bit more general overview, I'll turn it over to Kathryn, who will give some more details on what we'll be doing.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks. Hi, good evening. I'm Cat Briers. I'm a planner with the Bennington County Regional Commission. And actually, most of what I was going to cover has already been stated tonight, so I don't want to hit you guys over the head too hard, but we were asked to make sure that when we talk about integrating Form-Based Standards, that we're all on the same page about what that means. So as was mentioned previously, I think a couple of times now, Form-Based Standards aren't a radically new idea for Bennington or for the land use ordinance. As was mentioned, in particular, the Planned Commercial District, which is along Northside Drive, already has quite a bit of Form-Based Standards, so an image of that is just on the front cover here of this presentation. So we're not talking about anything radically new. What is new about the work that we're doing for this project is that we want to bring those Form-Based Standards really into the town center, so the dense areas surrounding So a little bit of maybe boring planning history, zoning history, but really traditionally, classically, zoning focused principally on regulating uses. And by regulating uses, what form that's traditionally taken is segregating uses. So in messy, old, historic, dynamic cities and village centers, everything was mixed together. You had residential on top of retail stores, right where the horse buggies were tied up, and it was a dynamic place to be. But as time moved on, concerns about public health and aesthetics, some people realized, well, maybe it's more convenient to segregate our residential uses from our commercial uses from our industrial uses. That really reflects that traditional approach to zoning, regulate use. And once we've regulated use, then we'll have the community that we want. As time has gone on, people have, and I think this isn't unique to planning, but across a lot of areas, we look back at things, how things were done before, and we say, actually, there were some really nice things about how that worked. So now there's a movement in planning that is actually taking a step back from regulating uses and is looking at mixed-use development, particularly in downtown areas where you want a lot of dynamic activity, you want a lot of housing options for your population, you want a lot of commercial activity going on. And so that's what we're looking at, Form-Based Standards, regulating form as opposed to solely uses. Now, that in its extreme form is Form-Based Code, FBC, and it's a very new and exciting term in the planning field. If anybody knows about planning stuff, you'd heard about Form-Based Code. Form-Based Code really is the radical, all the way to one side, of only regulating form and totally throwing out regulating uses. That frankly is a very radical approach. For towns that decide to pursue that, they're really throwing out all of their zoning ordinance and starting from scratch and only talking about form. That's too radical for Bennington. You guys actually have a really strong, a very good ordinance, so that's not what we're talking about. The Planning Commission has been very clear in trying, wanting with a Form-Based Standards approach to kind of get the best of both worlds. So still regulating uses, but doing increased reliance on Form-Based Standards, because, again, we want to bring in some of this dynamic and diverse development into the town center. So some examples of what Form-Based Standards actually look like, really, they take two forms. There are actual text regulations and tables that get into the details of what percentage of a facade has to be transparent windows and such. I spared you guys, and I didn't copy and paste a bunch of boring ordinance languages in here, but that's one component of it. But then you take those regulations and then you represent them graphically. So here's a couple of examples from Form-Based Standard plans in our region. So you can have, in the first example, some specific graphic representation of regulations about what kinds of encroachments you can have on the front of the building. And again, you can see that those are going out from, based on a transect, from relatively high-density areas out into lower-density areas. And you can see the last image is like a residential neighborhood. You also have facade graphics. You can see in the glazing standards, the next image, you'll have cross-street images, so in that public realm of the street. How does that look? What's the form of that to take in different areas? And it's going to be different based on if you're right on Main Street versus if you're in a high-density residential area or a lower-density residential area. And the final form that these tend to take in forms of the graphics is kind of a site-plan graphic that'll show you specifically where on a lot and how much of a lot a building, a new building can cover, where parking should be situated, et cetera. Because, as Robert mentioned, this is a pretty big-sounding project, so one way to help us really focus in and get the most out of this undertaking that we can is to focus on the town center, where Form-Based Standards are most likely to have the impact that they're intended. So we're looking at seven districts that are in this town center area, and the four, so far, we've talked about four Form-Based Standard areas that are going to apply to these areas. The boundaries of those are going to be determined, and the content of what's going to be in those Form-Based Standards are to be determined. But loosely speaking now, we've identified a central downtown area where we'll be defining what form development should take, a transitional mixed-use area outside of that, a high-density residential area, and finally, the village center residential area. As Dan discussed, we have a bit of an ambitious timeline for this project, but we can do it. We're looking at about a year to turn this around. We're going to start by looking at what's in the current regulations, start with uses. We don't want to be over-regulating uses. Again, the point of regulating form over uses, you don't want to be not allowing a use that maybe historically you thought wasn't appropriate, but now because of code, fire code, and other public health regulations actually could be appropriate in the downtown, and we want to focus more on what form it's taking. We'll be looking at going through those uses first, then the dimensional standards, integrating these new Form-Based Codes. From there, we're going to develop initial sketches of what those Form-Based Standards actually look like, because, again, these graphics really help to make the document user-friendly, they translate easily, it's a great tool to get better public input on all of these details. So we'll have some initial graphics. We'll be working to do a public outreach that'll be some facilitated focus groups. We're hoping that that might be something that the Bennington College students are interested in helping us out with. The critical feedback that we'll get in that public input process, we'll work back into the document and into the graphics. Again, throughout this process, but at the end, we're going to go through the entire document, find out ways that we can streamline and simplify anything in the regulations, any inconsistencies with the town plan, any internal inconsistencies, and really make it as much of a user-friendly document as we can. And the final component is to integrate requirements for a neighborhood development area designation. This is one of these state designations. The town has a downtown designation, which gives development in that area certain advantages and certain bonuses. This is an additional designation that you can have on top of the downtown designation that's specifically designed for more housing development and more diverse housing development. So there are very specific requirements that you need in the ordinance to be able to qualify for this. We're going to make sure that you have all of that, and we're going to help prepare all the application materials, so when this process is done, the town can apply for that designation. And that's what Bennington County Regional Commission will be helping with.
That's great.
Yep.
Cat, maybe before you, well, we'll ask you, don't go too far. We might have some questions before you go to plan line.
So this concludes this evening's presentation. I want to thank everyone who came out tonight to participate. I want to thank the Select Board for giving us the opportunity to share with you what we're working on, and we'd be happy to entertain any questions.
By way of brief overview, and so board members, in just a minute, I'll open it up to questions for not just our presenters, but also for the college students, if you have any interest in the various topics that they brought, roads, water, school districts, business districts, transition zones, and residential zones. But before we go there, I think one of the things that everybody always struggles with in this community is feeling like something's happening and they don't know it's happening. So as we get to step number four, public input, I would just like to say, it's really important of something of this magnitude for us to really know when it's coming, to telegraph well in advance when it's coming, how people can get involved, multiple opportunities for getting involved if possible. So I read facilitated focus groups, but I assume that means they would be open to the public, they would just be facilitated, it wouldn't be by invitation only.
Well, we've discussed a couple of different formats, one including just very general, anyone who wants to come. Some of us have expressed an interest in having some focus groups that are truly focused, you know, just get a bunch of developers together, get a bunch of realtors together, you know, to kind of get really focused input, but certainly not to limit it. We'd also be having focus groups where just, you know, and anyone could come to any of them, and it's not like we're going to keep anyone out, but to have other focus groups where it's more general, you know, citizens. Like Dan mentioned, we've got an email address now. Hopefully, if we don't have it yet, we're going to have like a link on the homepage or the webpage like we did with the Charter Review Committee. We even had, I don't know what you call it anymore, we used to call it chat rooms, where you could just type in your questions or your comments, and we all, you know, we discussed all of those on that committee. Hopefully, not within our ability to do anything, but hopefully the banner is going to be a resource for us to help get the word out, informational meetings, any ideas you folks have. Yeah, we need to get input from people to make this a meaningful process.
And it is one of the things that, one of the few ways that we can control what the future of our community looks like.
Right.
There really are very few ways that government can control that, and through our land use and development regulations, we can do some of that.
Right. We're trying to create a town the people want to live in.
Yeah, notwithstanding Cat's sort of an effort to make it sound like it's not a big deal, I think it's a pretty big deal to be thinking this way and to be taking a little bit of a fresh look at zoning, which we've done more or less in the same way in the districts that have been the same for a long time.
Right.
So it's great that you're doing that, and I really support it. Are there questions from the, from board members, in no particular order, for any of the presenters? Gene?
I don't really have a question, but I'm glad you brought up ways to get public input, because I was thinking the exact same thing. And I was remembering the Stark Street Park event and how they got a lot of feedback, and they made it really a fun thing to do, and I was just thinking, I don't know if you could do something similar to promote this project, but piggybacking on, you know, events like Midnight Madness and the food truck event and First Fridays, when there's people out already, that might be a really great mechanism to get people's feedback. It might not fit exactly in with your timeline, but there's probably something you'd be ready to present to public, to even just get them thinking about it and raise awareness.
Right. Hopefully, we can make use of Cat TV as well. And in one of the packets of one of the companies that responded to the RFP, one of the things they suggested was setting up booths at things like MayFest. They had a little booth, and people could come up, and they had, I forget what the activities they had were, but could provide their input, you know. So I think we have to go out to the public instead of just putting the word out and hoping people come to us. We've got to figure out ways to get out.
Right, and something different than just attending a meeting, which is great, and they're very important, but they're not for everybody, and they're pretty darn boring.
Right.
So, yeah, doing something fun and engaging, even kids, you know, getting the kids involved some.
We haven't talked to John yet, maybe about having a booth at MayFest, something like that.
That's Memorial Day weekend, isn't it?
Right. Oh, it's coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, it's really quick.
Maybe too late for that.
That's really quick.
We'll figure something out.
Also, Farmer's Market, and I'm just remembering when we were looking at the downtown, they set up at everything from Brew Fest to Farmer's Market, and it did get a cross-section of people, and you're getting, not everyone that you talk to is a Bennington resident, but that's okay, too, as we're seeing.
No, that, yes. Yeah, we'd like that, yeah.
Yeah. That's all, thank you.
Okay.
This is great, it's nice to hear from a lot of people. I know this will come up in focus groups, I would love to attend a couple of them, but kind of talking about the downtown, maybe, we have a variety of different owners of those buildings downtown. Many of those individuals struggle to find tenants for those spaces, and the tenants that are there oftentimes don't even kind of produce a return that could justify maybe some changes to their buildings or updates to their buildings. So I just kind of want to keep the conversation alive of, you know, ensuring that are these regulations or could these regulations impact the town staff needing more resources, which would impact our budget? Are investors more likely or less likely going to invest in our community because of the regulations and the current owners? How will we be impacting them?
Right.
Because I can speak as one of them, I get a little bit nervous upfront, only if, you know, are we exempt because we're pre-existing? Are the regulations that are going to come in, if we want to move forward, are they going to cost us an exorbitant amount of money? All things like, I mean, I'm constantly worried about, I kind of talk to the building owners next to me, whether they be on one side of the building, out on Main Street, the gentleman has some empty square footage, and the New England newspaper group's on the other side, and they're actively trying to sell their building.
Right.
So all conversations that I think in these focus groups, we should bet out, because, yes, we want a great community for the future, we want our buildings and zoning ordinance to look and be what we want them to, but we also need to keep the economics in mind, because we need people, we need money.
Right, absolutely. Right.
Well said, yeah, thank you. Other comments, questions?
Yeah, so can I follow up on that? I mean, I think sort of the flip side of that, I was, once these are in place, how do you imagine people engaging with these standards? I mean, do you see, do you see property owners downtown saying, all right, we want a more consistent look, or we want, you know, are you seeing this as something that then the town would go out and say, here's what we've decided as a group that we want in this area, and therefore, there's some changes that are going to need to be made? Or do you see business owners coming in and saying, hey, I really like this idea, and, you know?
I would actively make sure they're involved in that focus group, because there's a lot of folks that, you know, we just, and I won't speak for the collective group, because that's not fair, but I'll speak for myself, that, you know, I get, there is some, you know, nerves that are raised when we hear things as far as we need to follow certain, you know, changes, whether it be facade or, I mean, let's be honest, anything, because I doubt there are very many building owners on Main Street that are collectively making money on their investment. I mean, I hope I'm wrong.
Right.
I don't think I am.
And I don't know if I'm qualified to really answer your question, I mean, maybe Dan or Cat might have some thoughts on that. I can just say, for myself, I hadn't really envisioned this as something that, once we come up with this, we're going to go downtown and tell everyone they have to, we're going to rebuild downtown in a new image. I think my thought was more as, you know, as development come. I think my thought was more is, you know, as development comes, we want, you know, these kind of standards in place. Dan?
So just in reaction to the Main Street question, there already are the design standards in place, historic Bennington design standards. A problem that we've had with them is they're perhaps not as clear and as predictable as we'd like them to be. So our intention is never to, especially with the downtown, Main Street, is not so much to make the regulations more difficult, more restrictive, but to make them more predictable so that folks can know what they need to do, and it's very clear, and less of rolling the dice on whether, oh, are they going to approve this or not?
And even zoning out back from, or zooming out, not zoning out, but zooming out back including Northside Drive and just the town, yeah, probably Northside Drive and the Main Street area, as far as economics go, there's not a number of other areas, there are outliers. But we want to make sure we're making it enticing for people and businesses to want to put their businesses there. And I think this, collectively, we're all on the same page, just like to say it out loud in a public space, because, I mean, we need businesses knocking on our door, and it's unfortunate we're having to constantly try to find these businesses.
Well, and I think the comment that we're trying to make things more predictable, I mean, I think this is really, I think this is wonderful, I think, but I do think it is important that we be really clear about what, where this takes us and why we're doing it. So.
Well, and I wanted to talk to the point about, you know, whether or not this is going to place any undue burdens on existing buildings, existing landowners. You know, zoning fundamentally is a conversation about what you want to see tomorrow. And tomorrow can mean tomorrow, or tomorrow can mean 20 years from now, and depending on what the rate of development is in a community, it can mean closer to tomorrow or closer to 20 years from now, depending on how much is going on. So when there's a zoning change, you know, that's not a declaration that all existing activity has to be brought up to that standard. It's for new development, it's for, you know, if there's a permit that changes and is getting renewed, then these regulations would kick in. I will say too, though, specifically around costs for property owners, as I've been reading more to make sure that I understand this work specifically, it's extreme form, form-based code, which we're not doing, but that's kind of the model that we're trying to dial back strategically. A lot of literature on that points out that architectural design standards, which is a lot of what we see in the design review standards now, that those, you know, which are telling you exactly what types of materials, exactly all of this, those actually have been shown to raise costs to business owners, to property owners. Form-based code is distinct. Form-based code is really what is the overall form, it's less prescriptive in exactly what type of architectural details a building has to have. So we're going to be working on all of that, but that's very much a guiding post of this process. We're trying to eliminate barriers, which include costs through this process, and where possible, where advantageous, move away from architectural design standards to form-based standards.
I like the idea of you taking the best of both worlds, which you mentioned earlier. So Chad or Bill, anything from either of you tonight?
I just wanted to add that I hopefully can seize on the opportunities and kind of shifting from focusing policy on function more to form, that we relax on function, that there is opportunity there, and not lose sight of that and focus on what we're trying to regulate, but really open the door to what we're trying to, you know, loosen standards on regulating as far as function.
I believe that's a basic premise of the whole thing.
Okay.
Not so much on use, but more how things integrate into their surroundings and, you know.
Every business or building I've had has always been mixed-use, and that's always been an asset. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity here.
This is meant to be sort of introductory in nature, but I think it would be, I think everybody here would be disappointed if we didn't make at least one college student come up and squirm in front of the microphone. And so while they're, while they're wondering who I'm going to ask to come up, I'll tell you that.
Well, I have a specific question, and one of you might be particularly able to answer
this, but one of the things that feels like a shortcoming to me about zoning is that it is a bunch of bright lines. So it tends to be no transition zone, it tends to be one zone right up to the edge, and then across the street, a different zoning category. And it feels to me like there's a sort of lack of flexibility in there. So I don't know, George, if you'd be willing to talk about that. I think I'd be interested to hear anyway what you have to say, what you're thinking on this.
Well, first, my interest started with just reading through the different districts in the land use and development regulations, specifically noting how the opposite apartment district is written specifically as a transitional zone. But in greater planning theory, every zone is a transitional zone in the sense that they connect to other zones. So then that sort of started my investigation of where transition as a broader just feeling is felt throughout Bennington, and obviously, borders between districts are key places where that might be felt. And I think the emphasis in the opposite apartment district on transition should be expanded to the rest of the town plan and to the land use and development regulations in terms of like, not only thinking what the distinct character of each district is, but how it relates to the one next to it, and what it feels like to walk between them or from one to the next, especially since alternative transportation methods like using a bike and walking are trying to be more emphasized, that human scale is really important. And when you're on a smaller, slower scale of traveling, those transitions are going to feel a lot more, they're going to be felt a lot more. So that's what I was trying to emphasize for future revisions.
That's great, thank you. I think that's a great explanation, and if some of that thinking can be worked into this work, I think it will be a real value to us so that we can be thinking about it a little less in terms of bright lines between one zone and the other. So thank you very much, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes, Jeanie has one more question.
I have one more question.
Thank you, Georgia.
It's also for students. So I know, Donald, your class ends in three weeks, right? So, but will this group of students be available to take, to continue to sort of lend their thinking, since they've done some pre-thinking on what's going on next year? I mean, just as individuals, as students at the college? So I guess that's a question for the students. So would, so next year, could we, could we tap your energy and knowledge next year as well? Great.
Well, at very least, if you would be willing to share some of your work in digital form, I think we would be very interested in reading it. Over the course of the summer, we can't promise to read it all at once, but I think most of us sitting at this table would be interested in hearing what your thoughts are. So thank you, thank you very much on that. Robert, I think you gave a great presentation tonight, and, you know, I really do think there's a whole nother world of emceeing waiting for you out there.
There you go. I'm using my radio voice.
A job change from the Planning Commission, but seriously, I really appreciate, I think this whole board really appreciates what the Planning Commission does for us, the fact that you're taking our future seriously and the fact that you're working hard on this. Most of the time, you folks work in relative anonymity and obscurity and a little bit behind the scenes, not by design, but that's just the way it works. But I'm hoping that this can be a process that gets quite a lot of attention, since it affects everybody's future.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Downtown Improvement District Work Plan and Funding. So we have Bennington Zone, John Shannon here. Are we going to do the technology shuffle here? Well, while he's doing that, you know, for those of you that are watching, we're looking at the Better Bennington Corporation. I think that's your name now, right? Are you back to Better Bennington Corporation? Yep, so at the 2019-2020 Annual Work Plans and Budget, it says on the cover of their plan, "The annual work plan and budget for the Better Bennington Corporation are attached for review and approval. Following the National Main Street Approach for Downtown Revitalization, the work plans are prepared for each of the four standing committees, Economic Vitality, Organization, Design, and Marketing and Promotion." So that's how John's, that's how John's work plan and budget to us is set up. We figuring out PowerPoint?
Now, I might be stuck at this level, just so it doesn't continue to be following through it, I'll leave it that way, if that works for everybody, and we're all in on it for everyone.
The little slideshow icon in the lower right doesn't work.
Yeah, oh, no. Yeah. Cool, thank you. I've got, can't be easier than all we.
Thank you, Mike. What a guy. The man, the myth, the legend.
You're going to loan us.
Good evening, everybody. If you'd all give a copy of the 2019-2020 and the work plans and the core services, lucky if I open up a few guys and ask you questions about it, or if you could serve people ahead, I'll do our annual talking at the home here, tell you a little bit about the Better Bennington Corporation, what it is we do, and how we feel about doing it. Can you guys describe?
Usually, I'm a bright, I can give you a part of the slide, change, calm down, calm down.
We follow up the national program, the way that the organization is set up, but we break it down locally into three categories. All of the organizations and the businesses we work with, all of the people that we assist, and all the projects that have been completed, we always categorize under either partnerships, promotion, or projects. The list is long of everything that we do, but we put it in those categories because it affects the way we handle it. I'm going to start at the top with the partnerships, promotions, and projects, work a little down into the details, I won't go far into the details, and then I'll finish up how we go about accomplishment, all of that. Partnerships, it's probably our greatest strength in that working with other organizations and businesses in town tend to make it easier for them as well as us to accomplish the most things most effectively. Promotion comes down, that's marketing and promotion, that's our events, and then the marketing steps that we take for either the town of Bennington, downtown Bennington, or businesses and events, and projects. That's probably, no, that is definitely where we spend the greatest amount of resources, time, and funding, because the projects are all the visible activity downtown Bennington, plus working with most of our partners. Partners, our partnerships, I looked at, but it's a unique story. And I say that it's unique in that we are one of the only organizations in Bennington and downtown organizations, or one of the only organizations in every community that is actually designed to work with other organizations, from municipality right down to every individual business and all the organizations in between. And I listed a little further on, a lot of the groups that we work with, the businesses that we work with, but the list is pretty never-ending. There's very few organizations in Bennington that can benefit from working with us and vice versa, and we do that by our own. Promotion, and projects. Projects going back to why I say that's where we spend the most of our resources, our time, and our funding, it doesn't match the pages. It's because it involves all, involves all the visible things, right down to the boroughs, the recycling receptacles, the benches, the downtown planting program, which is part of Bennington Blue, working on parks, streetscape, our visitor, operating the visitor center, managing our volunteer program, plus working with all the shop owners and residents in Continuing with partnerships, and I'm not reading off of those, you can see all that, are there like maybe the top 15 or 20 organizations that we either work with once or twice a year, or once or twice a day, depending on the projects that we're working on? And there are no way in the list of the scope that we work with the town of Bennington, I would have to say we do the majority of our partnership work with Row Bennington, which I'll get into who they are, what these organizations are later, but they are just listed, they are in no specific order. And those organizations and entities continue their promotions. We've just listed some of the things that we do that even our board of directors make sometime, how is that a promotion? But the visitor center is another area that we spend a lot of time, resources, the majority of our staffing issues on. And what the downtown visitor center is meant to do is promote all of the businesses downtown. It's meant to attract visitors to the town, attract residents to downtown, and once they're where they're, it's to sell them on downtown and try to convince them to spend more time in town by taking part in our shops or restaurants and the gallops. The Four Corners Kiosk, which is one of the Four Corners, every organization in town comes to us, we manage that, to help them promote their events, their activities, quite a bit of expense maintaining them and the time coordinating it. BetterBennington.com is our website. Our website is unique in that it provides each one of our members in all of the downtown businesses a web presence, whether they have one or not. Most importantly, it provides links to all their individual sites, which raises the visibility of all of their individual websites. Social media sharing, I'll get a little more into that later on, but as far as marketing promotion goes, the Better Bennington Corporation does not market individual businesses, that is their job. They're in control of the branding, they're in control of the marketing, what we do is help enhance it. As far as social media goes, we follow as many businesses that we're aware of that have a social media presence, and we have two or three volunteers that scroll through the social media, and if they see posts, we share it to our agents. We do not do their marketing or their promotions or their activities. Travel and business publications, that, because of our organization, we belong to about 40 or 50 media corporations that provide minimal expense or no expense promotions, all the way from the state of Vermont, travel tourism marketing, down to local and regional travel publications. And wherever we can put in content, we try to do that because it's at no expense, plus it's story content as opposed to advertising. At times, we purchase small ads to get those story content, but based on our budget, we try to limit the amount we spend in each location that we reach, and where we spend the majority of our actual paid advertising is in the multi-market, just because it's proximity, any more people that are there. Then in Western Massachusetts, because of the easy draw from Western Massachusetts, and then east, towards Belvoir. Conline Travel Sites, that's another one that we spend a lot of time on, low cost and the reach that goes out from those. Travel Expos, we usually do those, do those in coordination with the State of Vermont, Chamber of Commerce, for example, like the eastern states actually shoot down West Wington, Massachusetts, they get over a million people a year, and we ride in hotels in the state of Vermont, and while we're there, we get to put our stuff on account, or so it's 15, 20,000 people there, or actually, it's 100,000 people a day, everything that they're seeing is Bennington, Vermont. I keep flipping through. I keep flipping through. Bringing it up, bringing it up to speed. Projects and promotions, all of the events that we hold downtown, we hold ourselves in host of our ten events. Some of them are large scale, the one that's coming up in two weeks, Mayfest, some are much smaller, like First Fridays. First Fridays, but instead of us doing the promotion, we ask that the merchants do something to actually get people on the street. So it's again, our strength is in our partnerships with the businesses as opposed to us trying to do it ourselves. You guys are ahead of me already. Benefits, and this has come up in some conversations with our select board, is what is the origin of the downtown designation in the Better Menning Corporation How to Do it forum? Started on the national level with the National Main Street Program. It was a program that the state of Vermont adopted called Vermont Downtown Program. In reaching out to communities, for a community to actually go through the process of receiving the downtown designation, the state makes and federal makes available quite a bit of benefits to them just by us in the use of this. And that's one with a full-time paid staff, the type of relationship we have with our community, us following programs that outlines the forum approach to national programming. And one that Kat had mentioned earlier, one of the newer ones is the neighborhood development area eligibility, which wouldn't even be a possibility for the work that they're doing if there wasn't the downtown designation on the place. How we make that happen is through the National Main Street Program. It's called the Four Point Approach. It's... Organization. Organization is internal. That's our board of directors and our committees. That's making sure that our meetings are recorded, the meetings occur. It's all internal work that nobody actually sees on the outside. It's recruiting volunteers, recruiting the members. The design group, that's the one, just the opposite, that's the one that our residents and visitors see the most. That is every single thing you see on the street. That's from our benches, barrels, working with the Bennington Blue Committee, graffiti removal, trash cleanup, alleyways, parking lots, and that's meant to make downtown look as maintained as well as possible, because it has an effect on people's psyche and attracting them there and keeping them down there. Anecdotal, which I shared with the design committee the other day, there's a couple just moved to Arlington, and we got a follow-up today from them. The woman's husband is a design graduate, recent design graduate, and one of the things they noticed when they came through Bennington as they were moving here was the downtown planting program. They said they'd traveled all over the place, and this stood out. The very first thing they noticed, and it stood out with the community that they're there. So we know for a dollar that it does pay off. Finally, about the end of marketing promotion committee, that is a committee that oversees their website, social media posting and sharing all of our events, and round up the volunteers, all volunteers and agents to do all of those. And economic vitality, economic vitality is basically made up mostly of downtown business owners, and that deals with recruitment of new businesses and who we reach out to, the material that we can provide to them, the material we have available for inquiries, and dealing with the future of retail, which we all know is changing pretty quickly into an online business, and how is it we deal with downtowns not as just a retail destination, but one where COVID usage means a lot, which is why the economic vitality is now looking toward helping with the community designing parks and walkways and streetscape, making downtown just a place you want to be. And while you're down there, we have people on the street, then it translates into people spending more shots. That's my last one, a simple quick overview. 2018, 2019. This was a very difficult year for us as far as keeping all of our activities and events going, starting on July 31st, 2018. I think everybody knows the building we operate out of, and the visitor center they operate was destroyed in a flood. We were kind of hoping it was going to be a few-week process, so we moved everything upstairs. As fast as this was discovered, it's been about a building completely. Couple months after that, we moved into the Hutton project, and the construction was starting, so we had to move back upstairs, and just as of two weeks ago, we moved back downstairs and moved in. So in the last nine months of moving, we've actually relocated the entire operation four times, added a lot of expense to our bottom line, moving every single time, and putting a lot of money into the Hutton location because we operated the visitor center around there all summer. But as of a week ago, we're back up and running in our old location and heading to the public. That was something we were dealing with. The painting project, last summer's nightmare, that is over. We worked with Natalie Boyle from Vermont Beachland to make sure that we reached out to every single business downtown, set up a communication network, and just made sure that everybody knew as much as they could possibly know what was coming down the road to affect our business throughout here. For a project of this size compared to the other communities, Natalie ensured us that went much smoother than most construction projects we had done. Lots of issues, but we spent a lot of time learning the time to make sure that the readers were on. Next, the St. Patrick's Day parade. I mentioned that in particular because that is one event that we picked up in hopes of continuing after TJ Carney moved, and we didn't find any interest from like a bar or a restaurant picking up that would normally sponsor this parade. And this is the year that we finally decided with five years of terrible weather, miserable conditions, not a lot of attendance that we were finally just going to stop, which is taking up effort with very little return. But I think everybody knows that Christopher Wright stepped in and asked us if we could, if he wanted to keep it going, if we could help him the next couple of years to keep this event going. So he is now dedicated to picking it up, helping it continue to grow. So we signed on with him just because he's made a lot of effort and has a lot of value in it. And finally, one of the big issues, which this is a very positive one, it's called State to Stay. It's a Vermont state program and a Vermont relocation program. Both have received renewals from the state of Vermont. But the reason I put them there is we work in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, which is what the state uses to operate the local State to Stay program. And Bennington, in Bennington County in particular, yes, has been one of the most successful areas with these two programs. State to Stay is where someone's thinking of coming to Vermont, they can pick a location, and locally we host a reception and set up interviews for people who are bringing all here on the same weekend. And it starts off with a reception with all the local economic community, some employers, and then a kind of wine indictment the whole week, making them feel, trying to sell Bennington, making them feel instantly connected. The relocation program is that one that all the country sort of, where you're paid to book in Vermont, kind of sounds a little bit negative, and it seems like an extremely expensive program to attract new residents, but it's not. It's very effective. They'll pay up to a certain, quite $10,000 to relocate somebody here who operates an online business, works remotely. They'll also pay for membership at the White Jar, over in East Bay. And again, in our area, we've had five or six couples that have actually moved to Bennington and Bennington County because of these two programs. We're thrilled that the town, or the state has just renewed and had additional money to fund this program going forward, because it's had a big payoff for our area, and we're happy to participate in it. Going forward, the last one, I keep looking for, you've been ahead of me the whole time. Looking forward, here's what's going on downtown. Some of it has something to do with us, some of it doesn't, but I just wanted to take the opportunity to say that there's a lot going on downtown. 2019 is going to be an exciting year because there's a lot starting and there's a lot happening up in 2022. The Hutton project, we all know, is set up in a couple of weeks to close and have construction start. That's going to have a big impact on the streetscape of downtown Bennington. You'll see the construction of something incoming. The Town Garage, congratulations to our select board. I honestly believe that more transaction wouldn't have happened with our leadership many years ago. It was a very forward-thinking group that turned out to be very positive. I think we all know the property was sold. And that beautiful building, which looks like a nice one, actually has a great deal of historical significance to it, and the new owners plan is to restore it in a very respectful manner to its heritage, and then bring a distillery and a tasting room to downtown. Select board made sure that whatever went there wouldn't just be a storage facility, but for people. The reason I put that on there is winding the clock back a few years. Our design committee worked with, maybe she announced the local resident who was attending a design school down in New York City. We asked him to redesign that building, so that it would end up in the park department. And we ultimately traded it up in New York City. We watched his presentation, gave it back, and it's still Shannon's office there. It was in Sead's office last time. I don't know if you pushed him off on the corner, but we like to think that we planted a seed that it's going to finally come into a realization for the merchants' park. I think we all saw water was turned on just last week, and Saturday evening, big dash into the white zone. So that's going to become a reality in a few months. Working with the local Bennington Arts Council, Bennington and Chamber of Commerce, Shannon. We've actually scheduled, well, we haven't signed with them, but scheduled our first concert there in the summer, and the stages will be completed yet, but we'll be announcing a rather large concert there on Bennington our weekend. Making sure you're not, in case something changes in the last time. 428, called that Madison's Project, that is inching closer, closer to completion, so we're expecting that to open this summer as well. Hill Mall Research, that's due this summer, or just on the same day. These have a great deal of interest, they have feedbacks on reserve itself too, so it's come from our office through local realtors. And a lot of that is going to become a realization this summer too. A lot of it's a transition. But the exciting part is that, again, through the urging of you guys to find that, it's going to be reserved for projects that attract people coming looking downtown. Going back to the State to Stay program, the relocation program, the orange orange groups will be opening up, randomly opening up on Thursday, Bennington our weekend. As the beyond gallery, there was a couple that actually appeared in Colorado because of those two programs, and they do operate on their businesses, and they can be opening up a storefront and approach the whole world, where they're in Bennington. So that's just one example of a great, something interesting coming mainstream, high-level programs working across the chain on all those. And finally, this evening, after the slide meeting, there is a soft opening for the newest place in town called Hudson's Tavern, corner of People and Bridge. That's an old J C's, and it's got a good launch. It was a good job in Bennington, it's down.
John, thank you for that. That was a great, it wasn't a summary exactly, but that was a great overview, yeah, sort of in-depth overview of what you do. And I'd like just to let the board know that in the past, when we have looked to our designated downtown organization and their work plan, we have kind of gone through the work plan blow-by-blow, and it hasn't, it hasn't been that effective for us. And so it felt like it might be better to have John put it in plain English and really give a presentation of what they're going to do. But our task here tonight, and I will ask for a motion in a few minutes, is to review their work plan and their budget and either approve it or just disapprove it tonight. So I would ask the board, if you have any questions, a lot of this has been covered in John's presentation, but if you have any questions about the work plan or the budget for John at this point?
I have a couple of questions.
Go for it.
I was following up last, I think a year ago, Donald had a question about social media, and you were going to pick that up like 25% in traffic, and I just want to know how that worked out. You were picking up social media traffic, your plan, I think you would ask a question last year, I think, Donald, about the goal was to pick up social media traffic by 25%, and I just want to know if that worked out, how it worked out, where you're heading with that?
Well, the way we did increase it to 25% is we boost our boost for social media, so we boosted it over 25%. And tracking on page views, which they're just numbers, and we literally have a million page views with no actual turnaround on it. So the page views has increased exponentially greater than that. The clicks over that, but the return in that social media, Facebook as opposed to our website, we don't know the return, like who is actually in downtown because of the Facebook boost that you're getting clicks and views. But the numbers that we do track using the clicks, we did stack it.
So you did, okay. Yeah, so I was curious about...
But it's not from, you don't celebrate it, because one goal is probably in the heart of it.
Okay. Well, no, I just wanted to track it from an actual number that was discussed last year. So your goal primarily is representing the downtown as an entity and trying to pick up all the members who are the businesses that have memberships and the independent properties that pay taxes into the D I D, that tax, is that correct, to represent that group?
Every single business and property owner individually is before. Property owners, we have a different relationship with business owners for many different reasons. But business owners that have a social media presence or a website presence, if they actively are mostly a promoter, we have volunteers who follow as much as they can and share and comment to boost it and spread it to our followers as well. We don't do individual, like if somebody has an event going on, we don't create their marketing plan for that event. That's what they, we help them suggest how they could do it or should do it, but we don't do that for them. It's up to them to run the market themselves.
Right, you're just reposting their content?
Absolutely. It's spreading to the extent that we can spread it.
Great. No, and I think that the job that you do is, you're doing, performing a really important function, and I think that you're doing it well. I think that my only comment is I just want to make sure that as it's tax-based, that everybody's treated fairly and equally, and that the institution itself remains as impartial as possible. I think that that, for me, is an important thing, so.
In that, just based on the last conversation we had, I think the entities that get the majority of our attention are the most active entities. And I'll use, let's say, like Minion Bee, for like Mayfest, she's been in four or five times, this is what we're doing. The more information she's giving us, the more it's getting included in our planning process. Anybody who walks in a door gets as much attention as the person before them. We currently reach out to them first by telling us what it is you're doing, so that we can publish it in advance, and the sooner that somebody... And the sooner that somebody steps up and organizes the planning process and brings it to our attention, the sooner the weekends help promote it.
So you want, so if people want to bring you ideas, their own ideas, and let you know, you'll get them out there.
Yeah, we just, you know, 170 businesses and property owners, we literally, we have a very close relationship with most of our members. And a lot of them say, why do they think you should come meet everybody at least once a week? Which sounds like a good plan, but it would take 50 of us all week long to visit all these sites over and over. We have, we all take it like Nats Toy Shop is like whatever big numbers in they are, but the printing supply place on Union Street is as much our members as they are. So even though they're not out front and center, they require as much of our attention as most anybody on the range. But through, whether it be a design issue, even a networking issue, like how do you help us get ahold of somebody or promote something, it all depends on what we're going to do. First Friday is the one that we would love to promote a lot more, but that's one we really have to go to 60 people. What are you doing? And don't tell us on Thursday what you're doing. I need to know a lot of the criteria so that we can prepare an ad campaign, printed material. But it's the ones that come to us early that just naturally get the most attention because it gives us material. But there's, there's one entity downtown that we can't do something with before. Like even at Mayfest right now, this year, it's the faith community. All of the churches have come together and they want, spoiler, they're feeding their lunch, they're giving their breaks. It is the faith who don't usually have a big opportunity to reach out to, and they don't actually contribute to the bottom line of the tax base. But we're kind of excited because they got together and they came to us and they have a chance to work with them on connectivity.
Great. Thank you, John. Other questions from the board?
I just have a comment. I think one way you could really entice people in the state-of-state program is to bring them to a select board meeting. I think it would be just an amazing opportunity for them. So I would say, schedule on the second or fourth Monday of the month.
I'll meet them at the Tap House.
Results are going to go sky high.
And once they're here, maybe the state-of-state is a weekend?
Oh, well, we can, we're flexible. We could, we could, yeah.
Jane!
What, Saturday night meetings?
Saturday night meetings. At the Tap House.
I'm sorry, I just had to say it.
We, you know, in a moment, folks, I would like to sort of try to get a motion on the table here for this, so please be thinking about that. But John, before we do that, this year, we have decided to start a, making a significant investment in our townwide marketing. And Shannon is here tonight, so she can talk a little bit about that. But if you would be willing to just give us a little description of how you feather into those efforts, I think that would be very helpful for us to be able to distinguish where you leave off and where that picks up and what the partnership opportunities are there. Maybe too early to say on a lot of that, but.
And microphone.
Really, who should be Shannon's sponsor? Sorry. The whole time? Sorry, man. Here she comes. BBC's connection to it, pulled a couple of our closest working partners together that had expertise in marketing and required really high standards for the image that they portray. Got them together even before the town committed to a marketing effort and asked them, what could we do? And if we put together a marketing strategy, how could we roll it out and let's get some ballpark expenses to it and make it a three to five-year plan? So that work started back when Zawat was in the role with the town, and we keep bringing her in and making sure she was on the same page. And then Shannon came along and adopted what was already started. And the work was already laid out for Shannon to keep going forward with it. But the people we pulled together are still together and currently working on some content for the baseline of the marketing strategy, and that would be the web presence. And then Shannon recently put out the RFP and went through the deadline, and I'm not going to take you any further than that because I don't know what's public. But the group is still there and just at Shannon's beck and call, what's next, what needs to be done?
So, and Shannon, you don't need to go through the whole marketing RFP thing, blow by blow, and we've put you through that once or twice before. But, but I am interested, I think this, this group is probably interested just to know if, how it fits with the BBC's efforts and their work plan. Is their work plan adequate considering what is coming, coming through the marketing RFP?
Sure. I mean, I think it's important to remember that the marketing plan for the Bennington Vermont Begins here is for all of the town, so it's not only downtown. So I think that the BBC is a huge part of the downtown piece and has really helped to, I think one of the things that John has done really well is using the BBC as a platform to, for other groups that want to get started. Like Crow Bennington really developed out of the Better Bennington Corporation, the Bennington Arts Council as well. And the same with this group that brought this marketing proposal to the select board really came out of meeting with John. So I think that he has been a great convener of people and of ideas for that. So where it stands now is we got a lot of great traction with the, the marketing RFP. We had eight bids that came in. A lot of them had a local connection, but I'm happy to announce that we chose the most local, which is 802 Marketing. They had both the expertise and the background in digital marketing, but also gave us an incredible in-kind, you know, it's, it's not free, but, but they gave us a really great deal on, on the proposal. They're also very close by, so there's going to be a lot of opportunity for dialogue because that's going to be important as we develop this and really take what's, what was already there with the Bennington Vermont Begins here site. If you go to it now, you know, there is content there. It links, when you, when you look at downtown, it links to the Better Bennington Corporation and Fund of the Arts and Culture, it links to the Bennington Arts Council. But now we have a, you know, a more seamless, both aesthetically and kind of an editorial voice across it so that it's really its own content. And then, of course, what we're really getting from a company like 802 is the search engine optimization and all of the pieces that draw people to a site that I talked about when we met last. So I think we can say we're ready to roll.
All right, great. Thank you for that update. Joe, you have a question for the board?
So I'll try to keep this.
Name it.
Hello, can you hear me? I'll try to keep this positive. It's a little disappointing that the board just kind of asked hardly any questions of John. I know Bill asked a few. My question for John is, when Bill asked you about social media marketing and your role on Facebook, you have volunteers who share other businesses' content. Have you shared every single business in the downtown in 2017 and 18 and now?
It would be crazy to say yes when there are some that we don't even know exist. We have to go searching for them. But all of those that have approached us, the answer is yes.
Joey, I'm going to ask you to say, ask your questions and have a seat, okay? So I don't want to have this turn into an interrogation.
It's not, I have nothing against John. It's not that kind of thing. But so what about a, I'll ask it to the chair. What about a 20-year business that hasn't been represented on the BBC's Facebook page in two years?
Okay.
Is there an answer for that? I mean, what is the answer for that? The chair and I met for a while, a few weeks ago, and discussed social media and marketing. Last year, you know, you had some very good questions for John about their, what they were going to do, marketing through social media. And I've kept statistics diligently every day since July 1st of 18, which was the start of the fiscal year. And you've seen the numbers, and we agree on certain things, but, you know, it's hard to just sit here when you have a business for 20 years who has probably the most robust Facebook page on Main Street. It's a 20-year business, and we don't see them on the BBC. They pay $500 a year in BBC dues, and they haven't been represented one time on BBC Facebook since 2016. This is, it's really disappointing when some other businesses have been represented 50 times, 75 times, and this business, regardless of the past, you know, if all they do is a simple fiddleheads page, oh, here's a post, share it, share it. They're not even giving that business that courtesy. And this is a real problem for $500 a year that a 20-year business pays.
Okay. Thank you, Joey. I understand your concerns, and I think we did hear tonight that it does mean a lot to this board that the efforts of the BBC are distributed fairly and equally. And John, if you don't mind, I would rather not have you get into this, into this right now. I would like to find out more about it, but I guess I'd like to ask you about it after the meeting. It feels to me like.
In general.
All right. But briefly, and I would say we have, I feel like we've heard a little bit already about your social media, that you boost, that, you know, we've heard what you, you say you're doing, and we've also heard from Shannon what she plans to do. So I'm going to ask you to be very brief, and then I'm hoping somebody on the board will, will move us forward here.
One question after that.
Okay. Very brief.
First off, try to.
Sure. No, I just, something occurred to me when Joey was talking, and I know the DBA's stuff pops up in my feed a lot, and they do a lot of stuff for local businesses, and I think it pops up more than BBC for whatever reason. I don't know why that is. But it occurs to me too that you, we brought up Chris Wright, who does a great job, and his stuff pops up all the time too. Are there ways that, I mean, there's a lot of people trying to do good things for this area, whether they agree or disagree? And if I could ask one thing, even if you throw me right in the middle, call me tomorrow and I'll do whatever, is there a way that we can start to work more collaboratively with all these positive efforts? That's all.
It's not, that's not collaborative. Chris Wright, when we set up our Facebook page, you had to have an administrator, so I had to set up a Facebook under my name. And I had eight more followers than what BBC has, and I never posted anything on Facebook. So I had to give my administrators access to my page. Chris Wright owns my page. He just shows up, every other post is Chris Wright, Chris Wright, to the point where the administrator's like, why are you getting all Chris Wright stuff and hardly anything else? I have no idea. But if Chris Wright posts something, either a benefit in town or an activity downtown, that's when we post and share. So, but like the blow by, it's not much, because you have to post and share a lot of it. And so I haven't checked, and we follow them. It just doesn't show up in our rhythm to post and share. So we tell them, if you follow us, and what can we do to make it appear more in the feed? And it's just when the volunteers sit down, scroll through the feed, I see sometimes a volunteer at the same time, and then sometimes it can be three of us at the same time, and other times. It's been a whole day that nobody's logged in to share anything.
John, I think.
And that's where all the.
I think I'm going to cut you off. Yeah, thank you for that explanation. Did you get enough out of that to understand what you want to have? I, I'm going to summarize by saying, I think that the social media presence, look at this work plan. It's a relatively small part of that work plan. We have a big marketing push that's coming on this year. I think a lot's going to come out of that. I'm inclined to not lose track of everything else that the BBC is doing on this one issue. Nevertheless, we do fair and equitable, it's really important. So, you know, I do think we want to make sure that everybody has access to it.
And if that's where we put the majority of, to the marketing plan that the town is supporting on the local level, we need the majority of the light.
So do I, for the purposes of moving this meeting along, do I have a motion from the board as to whether or not we would want to approve this budget and work plan?
I make a motion that we approve the Better Bennington Corporation's work plan for 2019, 2020.
And fund a request, right?
And fund, yes, and fund a request, yes, please.
How much is up with it? Can you please say it to the people at home and parents?
Sure.
Say the numbers, please.
Yes. And that funding would be $79,637.
That's right. Joey? So that, there was a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any conversation on this, is there any further conversation on this motion?
Eight thousand dollars.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to call the question and say, all in favor of this work plan, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay. So John, thank you very much for your efforts. Do good things for the town, make us proud, and we'll, we'll look forward to seeing the fruits of your labor. Next item on the agenda for tonight is the UCS lease for the Gage Street property. This should be fairly perfunctory since we've already approved this. In concept, we have a letter from our attorney recommending this as a good lease, one that protects Bennington's interests and one that has the Wilmington Campbell Benton Stasney seal of approval for our consideration. So before we move on to that, we have some presenters tonight. Would you like to introduce yourselves and give us a very brief rundown of what, what we're looking at tonight, please?
Sure. Thank you for having us back. I'm Lorna Maturn, the Executive Director of United Counseling Service.
And I'm Betsy Rathman Dunn, Director of Early Childhood Services.
And as you know, we came here in November to seek approval for moving forward with leasing the Rec Center property in order for us to build a Head Start building on property and collaborating with the town. And we've worked closely with the town since then to develop a good plan. And so we're here to hopefully get a sign off and approval to go forward with the lease agreement.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to ask us to clear the room, please, for, if you're not part of this conversation so we can, we can all hear those that are talking. John? Thank you. So we, is there anything particular that you want to tell us about the lease before we move into it?
Well, I think that part of it is partnership within the lease, just really briefly, you know, we were planning to add a community room as part of the Head Start program that we could invite community members in. We'll also have new playground equipment that's open to the community and being able to really work towards a wonderful community space that we can partner with the town. The lease is for a dollar a year for 90 years with a renewal every 30 years to make sure that we're all still moving in the right direction and still working together. I think that's the primary, those are the primary pieces that.
I think we've been thinking of it as a 30-year lease with two renewable 30-year segments, but I guess it's the same thing at the end.
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Anything else that?
I don't think so.
No, we're very excited about going forward with this project, obviously, and we hope to come back in June and present the, the final architectural drawings, because I know that's what everybody's mind is. This is really necessary because there are parts of here that the feds are requiring because they're the ones that are actually funding this project. But we are very excited about how far we've come and the additional funding that we've been able to secure to do this project.
That's great, thanks.
I think in June, you'll be very pleased with what we have to present.
I have one question. Are there any questions from the board on this? Carson, go ahead.
We like to think people read things in advance, even though they're posted on public sites. Can you just offer a quick reminder on the, the funding that you were bringing to the table via grants in entirety?
Right. So we have a combination of grants and some carryforward dollars that are all federal dollars that are about $3.4 million.
Yeah, that's a little bit of an update from last time you spoke.
Yes.
Just a slight difference in number. I think that's, this drawing's wonderful, but I, I mean, I hope we can really highlight the amount of grant, federal grant dollars that your group have worked incredibly hard to bring to the table on this. I mean, it's just.
It's really Betsy who's worked really hard. I just say yes.
I mean, if we're not recognizing that tonight, I haven't done a step in here, we should take it a minute to.
And I want to, if I can add to that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um. The feds, as I like to call them, are extremely impressed with the town of Bennington. The reason that they increased their funding and continue to work very hard to allocate funding to this process is this is what they see as so important. They see it that it has to be a federal, state, local, you know, combination of ways to be able to build and develop new programming. So this is something that they are very excited about, hoping that they will come from Washington to do a ribbon cutting when we get to that point. But that has been the strength of this application. The strength of this application has been because the town of Bennington has been actively involved and because of the land lease. This is just, again, with the recreation center, the whole thing, it just really spoke to them about how communities should think about developing different programs going forward.
And you and your team have worked for years, if not decades, to make this possible. So this grant money is tied directly to your efforts and some others, so.
And the respect that you've garnered, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
I have a very gritty question, which is so much less kind of shiny than yours, but I do have a question, I guess, for our town staff, and I should have asked it beforehand, but on the insurance amounts, it looks like it's, there are kind of $1 million per coverage numbers, and are those, those seem a little low for the kind of things that could happen at this situation. It feels like less coverage than I might expect, but I don't know insurance, and so I guess I'd love some reassurance from our town staff that we're on the right track here and that this is, these numbers are standard.
I could tell you from our perspective that they're standard with all those.
In general, they are, they are standard, and obviously, the insurance that we're asking UCS to carry is liability and protection for their operations. We obviously have insurance for the remainder of the operations on that site.
But we are also insured under their policy. Aren't we listed as also insured?
We may be listed as an additional insured, yes.
I think so.
This is, this was a specific provision that was negotiated with the attorney, so I feel very confident it has been looked at carefully by both sides.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I'm not an insurance expert, so I'm not going to opine as to whether it makes sense or not, but that's why we got that letter from Rob, is because he was very involved, and that was one of the issues they looked at.
I have tremendous faith in the office of Wilmington Campbell Benton Stasney, so I'm going to let go on that one. Any other questions for these folks while we have them here? Do I have a motion to approve the lease as written?
And authorize the manager to sign on behalf of the town.
And I would like to hear a motion to approve the lease as written and authorize the manager to sign. Anyone?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Bill?
I'll make that.
Thank you very much. Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Chad beat you to it. Got to be quicker. Got to be quicker.
I'm a cheerleader, at least.
And so, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you come back. Every time you come back, it's more and more exciting. All right.
So, that's going to be a lot of fun to watch that play out. Speaking of fun things, we have a request from the Grove Bennington Group. They, as I understand it, and Dan, maybe you'd like to, or somebody would like to straighten me out on this, but as I understand it, they need an interim name in order to apply for funding. I think we have, we all acknowledge we have not gone through a naming process. The former Merchants Park, there is no more Merchants Bank there. It doesn't make sense to continue to name it after a bank that no longer exists there. And so there is a request that we, at least on an interim basis, name it after one of the cross-reach, which would be pleasant, and so that it would be pleasant part for the purposes of applications of application. So I got that right?
So I guess I'd clarify, there's no need or absolute necessity to name it tonight.
Okay.
So if you folks don't feel comfortable with that name, or you'd like to discuss it more, it's just that as they move forward with the signage and those sorts of things now, there will be no formal name of the park on any of the signs, which is perfectly fine. We can come back, put some signs up later. So, you know, this is not, this is not a big deal. If you folks felt comfortable with it, we were going to move forward with it, we being the folks on Grove Bennington. I was actually not at this meeting, so I can't tell you why this particular name was chosen, but I was told that it was unanimous on the folks that were there. But you did see the list that they looked at, and-
I'm going to read it in just a minute, because it's funny.
You should. So, you know, I talked to Lynn this afternoon, you know, she wants to make sure that you folks don't feel any pressure to come up with something tonight if you don't feel comfortable with that name. It's just that would have been kind of the interim name while we continued to fundraise and those sorts of things, but it isn't necessary, so. It's up to you folks. You like the name, great. If you don't, that's great, too. If you want to come up with a process to find a name, that's fine, too. I guess Lynn was just very clear, and I think the rest of the Grove Bennington folks, is they're focused on getting the park done, not on running a contest or figuring out another name through some complicated process.
Which could be a nightmare.
Which could be, you know, run by somebody else, and frankly, they don't care if someone else runs it. But that's kind of the background.
I did get the impression from them that they're more interested in moving on, and that there is some value in naming the park. But just for fun, I thought I would read this list of other names, and if anyone in the audience particularly likes one, feel free to shout out. We'll make this interactive. So number one, Bennington Beach, Bennington Bayou, Bennington Bay, Walloom Splash, South Side Splash, Ocean's 802, The Vermonsoon, Family Park, Ladies Park, Green Mountain Fountain Park, Downtown Sprayground, Pan Park, Pleasant Puddle Park, Park at 109 North, Fountain for Youth, Benny's Fountain Park, Four Corners Park, Four Corners Splash, Pleasant Splash Park, North Street Park, Pleasant Park, North Pleasant Park, Pleasant North Park, Monument Park, Sprinkle Park, H2O Fun Park, North Point Park, Catamount Park, and Children's Park. So that was, that was the partial list that was read. What did, I only heard something for Walloom Splash, but anyway, what's the pleasure, what's the pleasure of this board? We have the opportunity of either naming it right now and moving forward with that as, on the signage. We have, we could put it all off and say, we don't want to name it right now, we want to do a contest, or we want to do something like that. So I also don't have a dog in this fight, and I'd be interested to know what everybody else thinks they'd like to do.
I would like to take a pause on it, only because I'd like to offer a reminder that there still is a naming opportunity through philanthropy to support this project. They've done an incredible job, the group in general, to raise a significant amount of funds in a very short period of time, and at the highest level of their kind of donor pyramid, the opportunity to still name the park exists. So I think we might want to remind the audience that that's out there. If somebody has the ability and capacity and interest to donate to this project, they do have the name, the ability to put their name on it, or a name that they so choose. So.
Good point. Good reminder. Other thoughts?
Well, and I do, I mean, so was this in the packet so that people also saw the comment about Bank of Bennington just being, so Bank of Bennington, my understanding, did not want their name on the park, but just to say they were a crucial early investor in the project, and their donation was substantial and also a critical catalyst. So, so people can give with or without wanting the naming, the naming option, but I think, I think a pause would be nice.
How do other people feel? Any thoughts from-
Yeah, as long as it's not going to slow things down, and it sounds like it's not, I would like to pause.
Dan, are we not worried about slowing things down with signage?
You're not going to slow it down. They're focused on getting the park done. That would just be a part of the signage. It can be done afterward. And if we get a large donor, you guys approve of the name, and people will be glad that it's like-
Someone says not Sprinkle Park. Okay.
If they donate enough, they can call it Sprinkle Park.
Yeah, their last name's Sprinkle. Chad, anything from you?
I'm feeling the same way.
We're all sort of, all right. So I think we're leaning towards, if I could paraphrase, and tell me if I got this right, but I think we're leaning towards a tremendous amount of support for this effort and enthusiasm for this effort, and maybe a desire to just not name it right now, not because we are unsupportive or don't like their name, but because we feel it's just not the right time for it. Is that-
There's no reason to rush.
Yeah.
Okay. So why don't we, I'll make a point of having a conversation with them and finding out what a realistic timeline might be for names, and we could, we could come up with some sort of process like that. Is that all right? Okay. We don't need to vote on that, I don't think. Okay. All right. So, proposal to name the splash pad has been essentially tabled for now, or has been put off for now. Liquor licenses. Stuart, what have you got for us?
I have two renewals for you to consider and a new license. It's interesting, the beverage den, you are renewing the existing license, the business is selling, so when it closes, it will, its license needs to be changed. So you have, this front page is basically the renewals, and then there is a liquor license attached that we must have at least four members approve of. So I'll circulate those for signatures.
Okay. Thank you. You've got a manager's report for us. Would you be willing to give us a little summary, as you did last week, of what we need to know, everything we need to know in Bennington?
I'm not sure this is everything you need to know. For action items, we have, the BBC has requested its road closures for 2019. We're talking about Mayfest, which occurs on May 25th. The streets are named, Main Street from the Four Corners east Valentine, School Street from Pleasant to Main, and Silver Street from Main to Union, from 5:00 AM until 6:00 PM. Falla Palooza on October 26th, same streets, 7:00 AM until 4:00 PM, and First Fridays, which will occur on June 7th, July 5th, August 2nd, and September 6th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and this is School Street from Pleasant to Main. And I would look for a motion to close the named roads for the dates and times noted. So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Close the road, bring it on. What else you got?
Just a quick note that we put six properties up for tax sale last week. Three were, two were sold, one was redeemed prior to the sale, generating $55,123 in penalties, taxes, and legal fees. And that'll complete our tax sales for 2019. We'll be looking forward to 2020. Hopefully, the numbers will not grow significantly. I've given you the Morgan Spring update, PFOA. The management agreement, which is between the state, St. Gobain, and the town of Bennington, is in its final stages of review. Our council has made several suggestions for changes in the management agreement before the town will sign it, but we expect that that will be signed, and that project will move forward certainly late June and early July. We should start to see bids going out and perhaps construction starting. And this is for the northeast quadrant of the community. The wastewater treatment plant project is continuing. They restarted up. I'm told that the contractor is moving very quickly and doing very well in cooperation with our staff, so that project is moving along at a really good pace. Attached to the manager's report was the Police Department Assessment, RFP. Those were sent out to a number of firms that specialize in police department assessments. We worked with the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity. It's a Brattleboro firm that has fairly good recognition throughout the state of Vermont. Proposals are due June 14th, so you'll be hearing back from me when those proposals come in and we've had a chance to review them. One last update. Got a call from Mary Morrissey, Representative Morrissey, about 4:30 today as I was leaving. The charter is being taken up by Ways and Means Committee of the House tomorrow morning. They hope to move it out of Ways and Means and onto the House floor, where leadership has agreed to suspend the rules.
Wow.
And get a vote on the charter so it can move into the Senate for acceptance and ratification, and then onto the governor's desk. Legislature hopes to close no later than this weekend.
Well, it still has to go through the Senate, right? So Brian Campion told me today, if it got to the Senate by Wednesday, they might have a chance of getting it through.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So that's the target, and it's been a very long and frustrating process.
Well, thank you for that update. I think we're going to do a little agenda setting here. What we, what is a little bit funny is that our next meeting falls on Memorial Day. So we have decided to instead meet on Tuesday, the 28th, and we were just going to get together and do warrants, but every, no meeting can just be simple, right? And so we have decided to allow the reconsideration of the solar installation, the community solar installation that was proposed for the Beal property to happen on the 28th. I'm, again, like I did before, going to have to recuse myself, and Jeannie will get her first chance to run a meeting, and we'll, we'll work on that on the 28th. Stuart, we're going to be here for that?
We will be here for that. We expect neighbors to turn out.
Okay. So regular time, 6 o'clock here on Tuesday, the 28th.
Are we also going to include the sewage treatment, the solar facility, the solar project at the sewage treatment plant?
I'm sorry.
FEMA's project at the solar plant, at the sewer treatment plant?
No, we're not ready to present on that, although we may be, but that's, that remains to be seen.
Okay. Well, we'll do some agenda setting, but for the most part, we're going to do warrants and do that solar, solar project, right?
Maybe a solar night.
Okay, maybe a solar night.
What, sorry, was it same time?
Six o'clock, Tuesday, the 28th. Yeah. So Stuart, on our annual calendar, you know, we have, in May, we've been looking for water and sewer budgets to be presented to the board and to begin our review.
Yes. They will be concluded and presented to me tomorrow.
Okay.
And I hope to have them out to you before the May 28th meeting, wherein we would set probably at least one work session to review through.
Okay. A special work session.
Yep.
We have, we have just done the downtown improvement district and approved the BBC work plan, and the boards and commissions appointment process is beginning, although it looks like the energy committee's not fully populated yet, or you still, still taking-
Oh, yes. Yes, we'll, we'll take applications right up until you set a time when you want to, I mean, I'm assuming that these people who want to be on the energy committee are going to be interviewed by this board, so you'll have to set up a time when we can begin those interviews. I don't think it makes much sense until you get at least the minimum number of applicants.
Okay.
So we'll see where that goes. The others, we might want to start first week, meeting in June, starting to do some of the appointments to the existing committees.
Okay. So you'll let us know for the June 10th meeting, we may meet and do some interviews then. And then in June, we'll be doing water and sewer budgets and setting the rates.
We'll also be setting the tax rate and the downtown improvement district rate.
Yeah. And salary increases or salary change, any necessary salary changes for the coming year, right?
Well, those, those I handle. You've done the ones that you control, which is the manager, the clerk, and the secretary.
So for the, what I have on the 10th, then, for, just to look forward to early June, is a UCS plan. Is that still coming?
Yes.
And so the Goldstone Phase Two plan, and a good presentation on that. And also, we should be responsive on this Morgan Spring delivery system, so I think, you know, I'm not sure we'll be ready by that meeting, but you're going to start negotiations or you're going to start conversations about-
I've reached out to one of the developers who was interested in participating, and we haven't really had a chance to sit down and talk.
Okay.
Dollars and cents.
All right. But you'll bring that along?
Yes.
And we'll get that perhaps at one of the meetings in June. Okay. Anything I've forgotten, board members, that we had said we'd get on in early June?
I have a question about the applications for the energy committee. If somebody on the board wants to be on that, do you want, do you want us to apply separately?
I think that would be helpful, because that gives us, that gives us the idea of how many people are actually attempting to be on it.
Is the board okay with that? Is this board okay with a board member applying to be on that committee? We could also-
I am. Especially if they have expertise in it.
I thought we already decided that Bill was going to be the liaison to that. I thought we already decided that Bill was going to be the liaison to that board.
Not sure we voted on that. I mean, I think we did discuss that, but I...
I was left not knowing.
I was left not knowing as well, so.
So I just wanted to ask, is there a process? I don't mind applying, you know, I don't care.
I'd like to save him some time having to put an application together. I thought we were in agreement myself, too, so.
I think the question was, I'd be happy to have you be part of that committee. I think the question was, is he ex officio? Does he vote or not? I, I'm not sure that voting is going to be a critical part of how that committee works. It seems like it's going to be more one of inquiry, but...
What have we done in the past in situations like this? Or has there ever been a situation like this?
Well, when we did the solar siting committee, I think, you know, several of us were on it, and we voted, such as it was, when we had to make a decision.
I, I just, I like consistency, so.
Mm-hmm.
However, you felt...
Stuart, do you have a suggestion for us on this?
You gave the one example that in a sense set precedent, and that is, if this is going to be truly a working group, I don't think it hurts to have a selectman be a part of that group if they want to be, or a select board member, I should say.
Thank you.
Because, in fact, Jim Carroll and you both served on the solar siting committee. That was a working group. This is going to be a little more formal, because this is going to be appointed by the board, but I leave that decision to you. But I think if there is an interest from a board member, I would like to have it submitted in writing, so at least my staff knows about it.
Okay. Why don't we do that, Bill? That gives us time to think about it and make a motion and, you know, move on it if we need to.
Absolutely.
We can't do that tonight, it's not a warrant item, but thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so, any other business?
Can we just say, so June 24th, we have Building Bright Futures coming to talk about childhood diversity and community response, and then we know that in August, the YMCA is coming back sometime in August.
Should be back, yes.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So I guess, other business, the only thing I would like to just make sure that we don't forget about is that Matt Harrington sent out an email today that I'm sure a lot of people saw, that is essentially an invitation to join a Southern Vermont College Appreciation Day. A downtown, a group of downtown merchants have decided that they would like to put some money towards the Southern Vermont College Staff Support Fund, which will help Southern Vermont College pay out their, their departing staff, and I think there's a feeling that Bennington has had a tremendous benefit and good relationship with Southern Vermont College over the years, and we're very sad to see them leave, and, and this is a little bit of help to, to make sure the teachers get paid for the final, for the final push. So Saturday, May 18th, there's going to be a 10% discount from many downtown merchants, I don't, not all, but...
It's a 10% donation.
Donation, 10% donation from many downtown merchants, and they are going to put that money directly towards the Southern Vermont College Staff Support Fund. So encourage everybody to get downtown on May 18th.
And it's not every business. I'm assuming the list will be growing, and I guess you could see the final list on the Chamber website, I'm assuming?
I don't know where they're going to post it.
Yeah.
He did give a partial list.
Right, so far, and I'm sure it's going to grow.
Be in touch with the Chamber, I think, if there's questions about that. So that's, that's it for me. Jeanne, do you have anything that you'd like?
I just had two quick things, and they were follow-up things, and I don't know if it's more related to Stu. Is there any kind of an update on the replanting, privacy plantings on the Dewey Elm Street ravine? And I just want the public to know that the crash data for the Elm Street, Dewey Street intersection was provided. I just want to highlight that.
Yes. And there's actually some additional information that went to Tim Payne from the Regional Commission about listing those. This intersection also, it appears hazardous, is not in the, in the top 100 intersections, dangerous intersections in Bennington. So it's, it's...
Bennington.
Even though it seems that there are a lot of accidents there, that it doesn't come close to some of the other intersections. And as to the planting of the ravine, Ron Pembroke provided me with a concept that he developed in concert with one of the individuals who was on the list. I've taken that and actually went into the field and came up with a plan that's somewhat less expensive, using similar varieties, and I've sent that on to Ron for his critical analysis, and hopefully he'll be back to me and we can make a determination.
So, and to be clear, I think, I think we owe it to the neighborhood to do a little outreach with that plan. I'm sure that was going to be part of it.
Once Ron has given me his analysis and we've, we've agreed that this is something that will work, it'll go out to everybody on, on the list before...
Before we make any decisions. Right. Great. Thank you for bringing that up, Jeanne. What else?
I have two more quick things. Just want to remind everyone today, or Saturday is Hazmat Day at the local transfer station. They're open from 8:00 to 1:00, and there were lots and lots of full green bags, full of garbage, that were all around town, and I just wanted to thank everyone for helping out with that. I did a lot myself, and I have to say, I was happy to do it, but wouldn't it be great if we didn't need Green Up Day? Wow, the amount of garbage out there.
Thank you, Jeanne, for your efforts and everybody else, yeah.
But anyway, thank you.
Carson?
Nothing.
Just question, and so a lot of trees have come down, and I understand that maybe some, we may lose a tree or two in Merchants Park as well, and that there's, it's due to disease? Is that what's happening?
No. Most of the trees that are coming down in Merchants Park were damaged, the roots were damaged by the construction.
Okay.
And Ron Pembroke, who is our arborist, indicated that even though they will probably leaf this year, they would ultimately die, so it's better to take them down before we get the site all landscaped and then have to take them down. And one Norway maple was taken down that is, was actually very healthy, but it is in the way of the design entrance to the park, and Norways, as you know, are invasive species.
Invasive species. Get rid of them.
They, they tend to be a little messy. They are extremely fast-growing, and they, interestingly enough, Joey Culkin was kind enough to point it out to me, they are recommended as a street tree because they are so disease and resistant and so disease tolerant, but the leaves are toxic, they don't break down, they'll kill the grass underneath the tree. Not a good tree to have in a park setting.
So are they to be replanted?
Yeah, we'll replant, when we do the entryway, there'll be a new tree planted there to highlight the entrance.
And the trees that are right outside here that were cut was, I didn't notice, on River Street?
Oh, those were all taken down because of the construction project. They were all, most of them were apples, I believe, or there might have been some linden. They were actually growing into the buildings, and they were literally in the way of the construction. We're going to be doing a whole new streetscape out here, curb, sidewalk, all of the concrete beneath the pavement's going to be removed, new drainage. We had to get the trees out.
Okay. Thank you.
And we did notify all of the residents that we were going to...
Good job. Not to be, not to get caught in that.
Chad? I just wanted to thank Stuart for the report after the students came about the Park Street crossing in the, in front of the high school, and I know the student senate has discussed it, and I think they're looking at coming back, so I told them to reach out, and, you know, I'm not sure where it's going to go. I do agree with their point at the end of that article, and I'm sure you saw the email about the practicality of riding a bike to Mount Anthony with our demographics from Powell or Shasbury in the middle, which probably might not be the most effective mode of transportation to the high school, but it was a good report, so thank you for providing that. Send it on.
Come on. Bill?
So I had an action-packed three weeks. I had a great visit to the senior center, so I want to thank Jess and Taylor, who spent a bunch of time with me, and I learned a lot about the Silver Seekers program, which I think the Y is going to roll out locally for free for a while, so seniors could possibly not be paying to go to the water that's included. Anyway, I thought, people had brought me concerns about equipment not being maintained, and I learned that the Y has everything on lease, all the equipment's new every three years. So I had a great, a very informative time at the senior center, got to talk to a lot of seniors down there. I had a really fantastic tour, thanks to RJ, Larry, and Brian for a tour of the filtration plant, and, you know, everybody hates paying taxes and paying for water, but, you know, prior to 1972, water wasn't a guarantee, and if it wasn't for Blatnik and Muskie and a lot of other people on the federal level, we would still be battling with that. So I would encourage everybody that hates paying their water bill to, on May 30th, go